Make sure that our buildings are in stellar condition to welcome our students and staff. So, I'm extremely pleased with what I saw when I walked through the buildings. We're fully staffed for the opening of the school year. A thank you to Dr. Sharp and all of the building administrators for their work this summer. Lot of interviews and demo lessons taking place throughout our district. And, you know, this board, I just want to give our thing. We were able to restore a number of our teaching positions and support staff positions that were lost. So, we're really going into this school year, you know, with some additional teachers that, you know, we were not expecting. So, all of our classrooms are ready, all of our master schedules in place. All of our students and families received their schedules. So, we are in very good shape. Also, this week and last week, there were a number of freshman kickoff programs where students engage in fun activities with their classmates and with, you know, the school staff and the administrators. It's also evenings where the administrators are able to connect to the parents and give them a lot of information before their new freshmen enter our doors. I know in all of the buildings, there was a lot of buzzing, a lot of kids coming in because everybody was coming in to pick up their Chromebooks as well. So, a lot of smiles and excitement as they get, you know, everything that they need in being prepared for the first day of school. This is a reminder to everyone and to our board and to our community that students will not be, and this is not, you know, a new, you know, policy. It's actually a procedure that has been in place. Students are not permitted to have cell phones out in the classroom during instructional time. They cannot be seen. I have that as part of my opening communication to our parents and community. All of our principals have followed up with parents as well. And we will make sure that that is reinforced through each classroom, you know, when our students, you know, are back in the building. And it will be strictly enforced this school year. And as summer comes to a close, we are excited to welcome our teachers back. That'll be September 3rd. We have ninth grade orientation programs at the building where students get to come in and follow their schedule and meet their teachers. That's on September 4th. And then we open up our doors for everyone on Thursday, September 5th. So, just a big thank you to our administrative teams, everybody, you know, our support staff, our secretaries, our Buildings and Grounds Department, everyone who, in our central office, everybody who is hard at work this summer preparing for this opening. So, we are excited to welcome our full community back on September 5th. Thank you. That concludes the call. There you go. Yep, then we will see all of our parents. Yes. The district's upcoming interstate visitation is September 9th through 12th. The FRHS D7 Academy offers original credit, credit recovery, eighteen bridges and abnormal one bridge. A hundred and sixty students completed credit air enforcement in mathematics and financial engineering. Forty-seven students completed one or two classes in mathematics, science, social studies, and English. Twenty students completed one or two eighteen-grade curriculum courses. And twenty-two completed the abnormal one bridge in related law students and doctor health and nursing.
Okay, thank you. Yes, it was Monday. So, essentially, the, most of the meeting dealt with this big document which was presented to us by the architect. It's basically a facilities assessment done by them. And it, every school capital requirement from the roof down, we don't have basements, but if there was a basement, it'd be in here. And this document essentially has five hundred and sixty-three million dollars worth of things that theoretically could be done, that we would need to fix. Obviously, that's not really dealing with reality. But, basically, the architects and this document went over all the different aspects of the buildings and what they saw as priorities. So, out of the hundreds of millions of dollars, we, you know, everything was divided up between priority one, priority two, and priority three. So, in the months ahead, as a board, working in conjunction with administration and building and grounds, we're gonna have to come to a decision on what we really need to go out to the public with, with respect to a referendum because there's just not enough money to make these capital improvements in the physical plan of the district. So, we have that to look forward to in the months ahead. One of the things we've talked about was the HVAC systems. I mean, we're at the point now where the HVAC systems we have are almost beyond repair. And so, a vast majority of the air conditioning in the schools needs to get replaced in the next five years. And just hypothetically, you know, whenever the weather gets warm and there have to be half-days, some parents, many parents and students talk about air conditioning. And just to give you a ballpark figure, I mean, from what I deciphered, if theoretically we wanted to air condition the schools, it would cost over two hundred million dollars. So, this is something that's gonna, we're gonna be discussing and making decisions on going forward in the months ahead. But, the bottom line is, as a board, we really need to come to a decision over the next four months. So, by December, we're gonna have to decide what we're gonna present to the state, you know, to get their approval to move forward with a referendum. And in the state of New Jersey, whatever we present, the state will pick up forty percent of the cost. And you really need to submit your plans to the state nine months before a referendum. So, we're potentially looking at a referendum in the fall of 2025, so over a year from now. So, that's what we have to look forward to there. The other two items we talked about had to do with Marlboro High School. As you have heard, on our agenda tonight is the agreement that we're making with the township of Marlboro for the construction of artificial turf, lights, and new bleachers at the Marlboro High School athletic field. One of the, well, the most important thing, I think, is the projects not to exceed three and a half million dollars. And I just want to point out that the cost of construction is entirely being paid for by the township of Marlboro. Freehold Regional, we will not be paying one cent towards the construction. We will be paying for the maintenance. So, if there's crazy inflation, costs, costs go out of control. It's not costing this district one penny. So, I want to be clear about that. And we are also gonna have control over the use of the facility. And then, the last thing we've touched upon was the painting situation at Marlboro High School. As we've discussed, there's been issues with some of the quality of the work there. And we've been in discussions with the contractor with respect to people getting paid for work that does not meet our standards of quality. And discussions with the contractor continue there. So, that is an ongoing saga that hopefully will be, there'll be a solution to at some point in the coming weeks or months. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Messinger. Just want to add, I just want to echo what Mr. Messinger had communicated. But I really want to thank Mayor Hornick and his team. They have been working collaboratively with the school district for quite some time in regard to this project, for this new athletic complex at Marlboro High School. So, we're really excited for this upgrade to our facility. I know Dr. Bleakley, Pat LaGravenus, Dave Riden, they have been working closely in, you know, the design and the specifications for all of this. So, we are very excited to have this upgrade. And just a thank you to the township of Marlboro, Mayor Hornick, and his team, you know, for, for this gift for Freehold Regional High School District and for Marlboro High School.
I do. The, on the back table, there was an addendum sheet, which are additions to existing resolutions, G1, G9, and G12. Those additions will be incorporated into the minutes and should be considered under vote on the agenda tonight. Also, we have some corrections on the agenda. G8, approval of honoraria, change Anthony Bresko to Anthony Greco. So, G R E C O is the correct name. G15, which is approval of six-period teaching assignments, change Mary Collier to Mary Sandra Collins. And finally, G16, which is approval of transfers, change Stephanie Cutrona to Shannon Cutrona. In addition to that, I have one addition, new resolution that I'll, I'll read into the record here, but to be considered on our vote on the agenda tonight. This'll be J24, and it reads, "Motion to modify the HIV findings in connection with report number MN-23-24-32." So, that addition, those are all the modifications to the agenda. Mr. Acetola, Mrs. Bruno, Mrs. Caffiello, Mrs. Higley.
Yes, but I've seen in G3 to Alexander Piera, to G4, to G10 to Martin Cordero, and G15 to Carol Cottrell.
And to Mrs. Lavin.
Yes.
Mr. McCob.
Yes.
Mr. Messinger.
Yes.
Mr. Bruno.
Yes.
Mr. Acetola, Mrs. Bruno.
Yes.
Mrs. Caffiello, Mrs. Higley.
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin.
Yes.
Mr. McCob.
Yes.
Mr. Messinger.
Yes.
Mr. Bruno.
Yes.
Mr. Acetola, Mrs. Bruno, Mrs. Caffiello, Mrs. Higley.
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin.
Yes.
Mr. McCob.
Yes.
Mr. Messinger. Mr. Bruno.
Yes.
All business, does any board member have all business? I mean, all business. I just want to, last week, we had our Hal County, Corning Hill, 5K at the high school. A couple hundred runners, all the folks who went to Crisis Center, contact the mom of the county. One of the state's civilians, Holly and her crew, and his ground scope. They really open up this place for us every year, they're picking the great position. It's always a tough course to run, so it's another great night, and we thank the community for the facilities. And fifteen thousand dollars went to contact the mom of the county at Crisis Center. So, I want to thank the way Mr. Holland, Julie Atkins, everybody who's helping, everybody who came out to help. Thank you.
Also, tomorrow, we are going to be inviting in our new teachers and staff. They are reporting to their buildings for new staff orientation. And then we have a district program for them on Friday. So, an exciting day to welcome our teachers and support staff. Also, on this agenda, as we were going through the personnel section, we have a number of folks here in the room that are moving into leadership positions. First, Michael Matthews has been a mathematics teacher in the Freehold Regional High School District since 2003. He's worked as a technology facilitator, a math league advisor, and has served for the past five years as a teacher coach, supporting teachers and professional development throughout the district. Mr. Matthews has supported curriculum teams with an extremely strong focus on adherence to standards and common assessments, and a real, has a real close eye as it pertains to expectations for students on state and national assessments. We are excited to have him joining the academic supervisor team. He'll be overseeing mathematics and science at Freehold Township High School. He's also going to support technology, professional development, and our needs in the district since we no longer have the teaching coach positions. He'll be transitioning to this role in the coming months as soon as we find a suitable replacement for his mathematics classes. So, Michael Matthews, if you could please stand, we are super excited to have you on the team. Congratulations, well deserved. Also, tonight, I'd like to recognize our new district supervisor for Buildings and Grounds, Martin Cordero, in the back there, will be starting September 1st. He will be joining the team with Matt Perdonee and Mike Zone. We've got an amazing trio, M-cubed. So, I'm gonna confuse all of you for the three Ms. Mr. Cordero has been a supervisor of Buildings and Grounds at Marlboro High School since 2018. Prior to that, he had similar leadership positions in another school district, but has over twenty years' experience in facility services and supervision. He totally believes in the teamwork concept and working with everyone, you know, to ensure that our daily operation runs smoothly. We are super excited to have you join our Buildings and Grounds team. Welcome aboard, please stand to be recognized. The three Ms, here, here we go. And you've heard from Mr. Messinger without a referendum, so we definitely have our work cut out for us. But we, we will ensure that we have outstanding facilities and kind of state-of-the-art for the students of the Freehold Regional High School District. So, we're, we're excited about that work as we move forward. Also, I want to publicly acknowledge a friend, a coworker, know them a long time. All of us here have Pat LaGravenus. So, he's been working in the Freehold Regional High School District since August 28th of 2007. So, today marks his seventeenth year with us, to the day. We thought that was pretty impressive. I don't know if you do that, Mr. LaGravenus. But during those years, you served as a district supervisor of Buildings and Grounds, and you've been the director since May of 2013. During his tenure in the district, he has led every facility project here in this district. He has guided us through snow, sleet, roofs caving in, a referendum, countless projects in the district, you know, and has always steered us with a very steady hand. We are gonna miss him very much. And I just want to just take a moment on behalf of our entire central office team, all of our building principals and administrators, we are really gonna miss you. I know our district is in really good hands. I know they're gonna have you on speed dial, but we, you know, we wish you the very best in your next phase of your life. And each day, you've been, you always have a big smile on your face, just like your grandson. Always a big smile on your face, but you are beautiful. So, we, we wish you the best and really, you know, thank you for your professionalism and your contributions to this district over your seventeen years. Thank you so much.
Yeah, Doc, yeah, Dr. Hazel, I want to jump in on, on that. You know, Pat and I have worked closely for all the time that Dr. Hazel just talked about. But, just to give you a sense of the level of responsibility of that job, this district has 1.5 million square feet of facility, four hundred acres of fields and parking lot. And it's not, you know, meadows, these are fields that require some attention with athletic facilities and safety and, and all of those types of things, and snow as well, as Dr. Hazel said. In fact, think back, it was this past February, we had a considerable snowstorm rolling in. So, Pat has a cot in his office, so he just stayed over so he could get up and out early to assess the situation and make sure contractors are clearing it so that we could have school. He, he deals with every possible level of people in here. It's not just us as administrators and the faculty and the staff of the district, but also the, the board committee, finance committee is a member of the finance team through negotiations with local construction officials, with state regulatory agencies, with our district professionals, architects, and, and other health and safety-related professionals, contractors. This is, this is a guy, when you sit with him, his phone rings non-stop with more things going on, way more than, than, than my phone. So, Pat, it's, it's been a pleasure. We thank you for everything you've done for the district, and, and I thank you for, you know, having, having my back throughout all those years, Pat. So, all the best to you.
Okay, so there's two things I want to bring up here. First, with respect to Martin, what I want to point out is, and I've said this before, but I don't know if I ever said it to him, is that any, anytime I'm in Marlboro High School off-hours, for all the years I've been on the board, you could eat off the floors in that school, and the building is fifty-plus years old, and obviously, there's capital improvements that need to be made. But in terms of what you guys could control, that place couldn't be any cleaner. So, I want you to know that every single time I go in there, I appreciate it. And just with Pat, I, just so the taxpayers know, and everything that Sean said is true, that all the years that I've been here on the finance committee, going to the meetings, we're building the grounds, he treats the facilities here, as big as they are, just like with his own house. So, you know, I just want, when you pay your property taxes, when you get quality people like this, you know, it makes me proud to be a resident of Marlboro and of the district.
Thank you so much, Mr. Messinger. We have one other very important appointment tonight as well. We welcome Alex Ferrara to the position of Assistant Superintendent for Business and Board Secretary. That's business administrator. Mr. Ferrara is a familiar face to the Freehold Regional High School District. He worked in the business office under Mr. Boyce from June of 2008 through May of 2014. We are super excited to have him return back to the district. I think he's very excited too. He started his career in education in a charter school in Newark where he supported operations. After about three years, he then joined the Freehold Regional High School District. He was a controller, focused on, excuse me, procurement and project management. He was then promoted here to Assistant School Business Administrator in 2011, where his responsibilities expanded to the management of the business office. He supported transportation, facilities, food services, and Buildings and Grounds. He has served as a BA in three other school districts. So, he's coming to us with so much experience and so much insight beside having his training ground be here at Freehold Regional High School District. He's worked through union negotiations, referendum implementations. I believe he is well-positioned to lead our business department, transportation, and Buildings and Grounds here at the Freehold Regional High School District. We are super excited to welcome you to the central office team here and to the Freehold Regional High School District. So, if you could just please stand, I'm like hoping to see your face there. Yeah. Welcome back home, Alex.
Welcome back.
Yeah.